Thank you. Please stand for the Canadian and Ukrainian national anthem, Council Gardener, please.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. Carton bras et portes les pays, il sait porter la croix. Ton histoire est une époque des plus brillants exploits. God keeper land, glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. There, Dennis.
Thank you, Council Gardener. The acting mayor for this month is Council Dean Hollingsworth. We acknowledge that we are gathering on the traditional territory of the Mohawk people of Aqasasne. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Glenn Grant.
Present.
Councillors Claude MacIntosh.
Present.
Dennis Kerr.
Here.
Sid Gardiner.
Here.
Dean Hollingsworth.
Present.
Councillors Kathleen Nivert.
Elaine McDonald.
Present.
Todd Bennett.
Present.
Justin Towndale.
Present.
Eric Bergeron.
Is there?
Additions?
Are there any additions, deletions, or amendments?
I have a couple.
Council MacIntosh.
Poll number seven from consent and number one from the bylaws.
And I have one as well, Mr. Mayor. And that is Communication Item Two, Integrity Commissioner Report 2022-03 is to be dealt with immediately following the presentation on the same subject.
Okay. Council McDonald.
And number six, please.
Other consent?
Was that mentioned? Two communications.
Could I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Council Hollingsworth, Council Gardener, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Any disclosure of interest in tonight's meeting? I have a disclosure for the presentation of the Integrity Commissioner. And I'll be leaving the chair and Council Hollingsworth won't be replacing me. The motion to go in committee of the whole. Council Towne, Council Bennett, all in favor? Carrie, thank you.
May we have a motion to approve the minutes of Monday, July 11th?
Council McDonald, Council Ebert, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Council Hollingsworth?
So, Mr. Acting Mayor, we have one presentation this evening from the Integrity Commissioner, Tony Fleming, and he's going to be presenting the findings of a recent complaint received.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Well, Mr. Fleming, thank you for coming this evening. Certainly, your presence, I expect, will help us move along through this. And now, Mr. Fleming, do you want to present, or would you just like, how would you like to proceed?
Mr. Chairman, council's hands, obviously. You all have a copy of the July 20 report. I'm happy to give a high-level overview. The facts are fairly straightforward as set out in the report, so I'm not sure if my summary would be of assistance to council, but I'm certainly happy to speak to any questions council may have about the recommendations.
So, I took the liberty, council, of talking to Mr. Fleming on Friday as to how he visualized it shaking out, and of course, the clerk. There's kind of three things that I think we need to do. First of all, really, three motions. Number one, a motion to receive the report from Mr. Fleming, in which case I would entertain question and debate related to the report. The second motion that needs to happen is how we want to present this report to the public, whether we just leave it as an item in our agenda this evening, or put it on our Facebook page, or city page, or whatever the case may be. And then the final motion, it kind of rests with you as a council as to whether you want to act upon the recommendations, or whether you just want to kind of leave it as it is. So, it's really up to you. So, I think what I would like to do as the chair is I'm going to look for a motion to receive the report. If I can get a mover, seconder, I'll entertain questions to Mr. Fleming and any other comments related to the report, if everyone's okay with that. So, can I get a motion to receive?
Just before that.
Sure.
Could we not have Mr. Fleming do an overall, just because there are people probably watching this on television who might enlighten them?
Well, if that's the will of council, certainly council supersedes getting a, I guess, getting a consensus. All right, Mr. Fleming, it would seem that council would like you to give us an overview, if you would, please and thank you.
Certainly, and through you, Mr. Chairman. The facts are set out, starting at the bottom of page two of the report. On June the 7th, 2022, the mayor sent two emails using his City of Cornwall email account. It was to a number of local media. It was indicating that there was a press release regarding the mayor's reelection campaign, and the press release was attached to the second email. If you look to page three of the report, that sets out the relevant sections from the city's code of conduct. Essentially, the city prohibits the use of municipal property and resources such as the city's email account, the city's logo, et cetera, when campaigning for reelection for a sitting councillor, which will, of course, include the mayor. It also, if you turn the page to page four, "Members will not use the services of staff for election-related purposes during hours in which those persons receive compensation from the municipality." The facts are not in dispute. The mayor was very candid in conceding that, in fact, he did, in fact, send the two emails. The email included a press release related to his reelection campaign, and the staff member in the mayor's office had assisted him to convert the press release into a PDF. Staff member didn't generate the press release, it had been generated by a third party, but there was some technical assistance simply to turn the document into a PDF. The recommendations and conclusions are found at the bottom of page four. It is a breach of the city's code of conduct to have participated in those activities. And with respect to the recommendation, my recommendation is that council suspend the remuneration of Mayor Grant for a period of two weeks. And as you'll see in the report, that is to reflect the seriousness of the code of conduct provisions. The mayor has candidly admitted, as I've said, that he did breach those provisions. I understand the mayor has apologized for those actions. I'm not suggesting there was any malicious or malintent on the part of the mayor, but as a matter of preserving the integrity of the process, it's my recommendation that council consider a suspension of pay for two weeks. Subject to any questions, Mr. Chairman, that's my summary.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Now, before I entertain questions, I'd like a motion to receive. Counselor MacIntosh, Counselor Ebert. All right, so if anyone has any questions to Mr. Fleming? Do we have any questions? Counselor MacIntosh?
Yeah, thank you, Dean. There was some misconception that the mayor had somebody from city staff write the press release. I wrote the press release, okay? This all started when the publisher, general manager of the weekly newspaper Seaway News, I believe, asked the mayor for a press release. The mayor wrote a press release. I looked at it and told him that wasn't, I could do better than that. And I did it for a living for 42 years. And I wrote the press release and sent it off to the mayor. And then what he did with that was accurate. And just for a point of clarification, I did all of this in my private email, my home computer, which I always do. But there was some suggestion in some circles, in one media source, that the mayor had somebody from City Hall. In fact, I think one member of the media called the mayor and asked him, "Who wrote it for you?" My response would have been, "Do you think I'm not smart enough to do it myself?" So, that's the story on that. I'm the third party, and I did it in my own time, on my own computer, and sent it to the mayor, and I guess his fault was, and he admitted to it, that when I sent it to him, I must have sent it to his city email. He hits a button and sends it off to the media. So, that's the story of that. I thought that the two-week pay, suspension of two-week pay, is severe, and I'm just wondering if you base this on what they call in the court system, case law or consent law? Is there another situation where you compare this to?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chairman. The Integrity Commissioner process is still very new in Ontario, so there are some reported Integrity Commissioner cases, but the majority of them are not reported. So, it is not based on, as you indicated, a precedent, so to speak. This is applying my judgment and considering the severity of the offense, the integrity of the process, as I indicated, and making a recommendation based on my experience to council.
Okay. Again, I thought the two-week pay was a stiff penalty. I went through the Highway Traffic Act offenses, and you might be familiar with some of these cases, where there are maximums for impaired driving, $500 first offense, passing a school bus, $600, you know? We're talking about a possible $2,000 fine here for something that, in my view, was not extreme, pretty minor, not a Rob Ford situation, the situation there where he sent out stuff from Toronto City Hall. So, I thought you were calling for a pretty stiff penalty there. And I thought, I didn't agree with, I don't agree with it compared to what's happening in the court system, which I know, we're talking apples and oranges here, of course. And I just thought it was, it's, for, you know, for councillors, that's spend us for two weeks' pay, that's chump change, but for a mayor, it's almost like a full-time, it is a full-time job. So, I thought you were really off the mark on that one, okay? Other than that, you do refer to it as the impact conduct was relatively minor, so I'm just wondering what the fine would be if it was a major transgression. Again, you say there was no deliberate attempt to send campaign messages to the public. Yeah. Having said all that, I just, I do disagree with your recommendation, and I certainly wouldn't vote for it. Thank you.
Counselor Bergeron, I'll be next.
I need a minute to absorb that. Okay. Mr. Fleming, can you describe the difference between the Code of Conduct and the Municipal Act? Because you consider this, or you write that it's deemed the same. Are these, are these two acts considered the same?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chairman. The issue is that there are, there are offenses under the Municipal Elections Act, and there are code of conduct breaches under the Municipal Act that runs through the code of conduct. So, the complaint had raised both Municipal Elections Act as well as code of conduct. And so, when I'm looking at this, I'm not looking at it as a breach of the Municipal Elections Act, because that's not part of my jurisdiction. The city has a code of conduct, and the code of conduct incorporates the policies that you've adopted under the Municipal Elections Act. So, that is, as far as I'm concerned, all I needed to look at for purposes of this incident. There was nothing to be gained by sort of doubling down on using two pieces of legislation. So, where I looked at it was through my lens as an Integrity Commissioner under the code of conduct.
Okay. Who would investigate that if not you?
Again, through you, Mr. Chairman. If there was an actual breach of the Municipal Elections Act, that would be done as a matter of a provincial offenses prosecution. So, similar to, to use the councillor's analogy, Highway Traffic Act, other municipal bylaws, any person in Ontario can lay in information, provided they're over 18, and have reasonable and probable grounds to believe an offense under a municipal, or, sorry, a provincial act has been committed, and that would go through the Ontario Court of Justice, through a justice of the peace, under a prosecution.
Thank you. Can you confirm, because I just heard that this was just forwarding an email, can you confirm that three, four offenses took place here? Use of city staff, use of a city computer to edit or write a press release, use of city email, and working on an election during office hours?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, that is effectively the offenses, if you want to call them offenses or breaches, of the code of conduct that incorporates those particular issues. So, it was one incident in the sense that an email was sent, but there were components to it. There was a component of using staff resources to convert the document into a PDF, which is an offense or a breach of the code. Then using the city resources, which would be the email. The email has the city's logo, so that is part of it, and the entirety of the incident was related to an election campaign. So, that is where the code comes in, and that makes it the breach.
Can you confirm that this happened during office hours at City Hall?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, that's my understanding, yes.
Can you outline how you go about your investigation? Did you read emails, or did you just provide an interview?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, we were provided with the material, and there was no need for an interview. We provide the complaint in written form to the mayor, and we provided the mayor with an opportunity to provide us with a written response. And based on the written response, which didn't dispute the material facts, there was no need to engage in further fact-finding. The facts were admitted, and on that basis, we simply applied the facts to the code that the city's adopted.
Okay. But were the facts admitted, that they just forwarded an email inadvertently, or that these four breaches occurred?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I can't recall off the top of my head whether we broke, or whether it was broken down that way in the response, but the complaint certainly broke down the various code breaches that were alleged. So, the mayor was aware of the nature of the complaint, and the mayor conceded quite readily that that is what happened. So, whether it was actually parsed out in that way or not, councillor, I can't say to you it was or wasn't. It very well could have been, I just don't recall.
Fair enough. The apology says there was one email inadvertently sent, but that's not what happened here. So, I contest a little bit what you just said, Counsel MacIntosh. This, to me, is a pretty serious breach of the Municipal Act, of the Municipal Elections Act, of the Office of the Mayor, and I treat it seriously. I have a few more questions. That kind of threw me a curveball there. If you can go to someone else, I might have a few follow-ups to the report itself, if that's allowed.
Well, Counsel Bergeron, just an FYI, rules are fairly clear. If you want to do a second crack at this, you have to have a motion to suspend rules, and I'm...
I'll keep going, sorry.
So...
Yeah, I have more questions.
We'll leave it to... All right. That being said, do I have any other members who wish to ask any questions?
I have more.
Oh, you're still?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, my apologies.
I'll just keep going. I wrote some down, but they're irrelevant now based on the... Mr. Fleming, through the chair, were you made aware of a breach of the alleged complainant's name on this submission?
Through you, Mr. Chair, there was some allegation of that, but that was not part of the complaint that was before me.
Would that require a separate investigation?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, yes, it would.
Okay. Because to me, that's a pretty, and not the same, but I consider it part of what I thought you would have investigated. The complainant's name was made public, and an editorial was written about it, allegedly. So, to me, that's a massive problem, if there's a breach of privacy in who sent the complaint, separate from all of what we're talking about here. And that did happen. So, I'm going to file that tomorrow morning. I think that's a very important thing to be investigating. I would have thought it was part of this. Aside from that, I mean, at the end of the day, I'm fine with this just being part of council's agenda in terms of where it's published. But I think that's the next motion, is that correct?
Well, I think we'll kind of tackle it one motion at a time, and I'm willing to entertain separate debate on each motion rather than try to sum it all up, so...
Yep, that's enough. That's all the questions about the report. Thank you.
All right. That being said, do I have any other further speakers on the motion to receive and Mr. Fleming's report? Not seeing... Oh, Mr. Counselor Gardener.
How are we going forward with this? Number one, the mayor was asked to write a formal public apology, which he did. Are we voting on that first, and then the second time, we're going to vote on whether his pay is docked?
Okay. Perhaps I can recap. Currently, we have a motion to receive. I said I would entertain questions to Mr. Fleming or comments with regards to the report. So, that's kind of what I'm looking for. The second thing that has to happen, assuming we'll accept, we'll receive it, which I imagine we will, the second motion I'm going to be looking for is something to determine how we want to present this to public, whether we just leave it as agenda. And then the final motion, pending on what council wants to do, is do we accept the recommendations from Mr. Fleming, or do we do something else, or just let it go? That's... So, right now, we have a motion to receive in which I said I would entertain questions to Mr. Fleming and/or discussions about the report specifically. So, that being said, Counselor Gardener, do you have any questions for Mr. Fleming?
Not as a president-elect.
Anybody else with questions or comments with regards to the report? That being said, all in favor to receive? Opposed? None? Carried? So, the second thing I'm looking for at this point is a motion to determine how we make it public. What do we, as a council, want to do? I'm looking for the actual recommendation from admin, is seeking counsel direction, correct? I think we're good. So, this is up to you, folks. What do you want to do? How do you want to present it to the public? Counselor MacIntosh, what would you like to suggest?
Well, we have a, we have a website, city website. We want to make it more public. It's already pretty public right now.
Well, it's really up to, all I'm looking for is a motion at this point.
I'm going to listen.
Counselor Bergeron, would you like?
The motion would be that publishing it in our agenda is adequate.
Okay, so I have a mover. Publishing in the agenda is sufficient. Do I have a seconder for that? Counselor Bennett, do I have any comment or debate on that particular motion? Counselor Bergeron?
Just want to say that last year, there was, there was a similar code of conduct review, and I was very clear that publishing it in our agenda is more than enough. Our agendas are public, and I believe that, so I don't know why we would push for anything more. That's why the motion is, it's the same as what I suggested last year.
Okay. Do I have any other comment, debate, discussion on the motion? Counselor McDonald?
So, this is just a question, kind of a follow-up to Counsel Bergeron's point about it being in the agenda. I'm assuming it will show in the minutes of this meeting. Yes. So, I agree with Counsel Bergeron that this has had plenty of daylight shone on it, and to have it reflected in our agenda and in our minutes, I believe, is sufficient, because the mayor has apologized a few times on record and publicly, and the incident is well-known and well-discussed in the community, and I think that if it were to show in our agenda in minutes, that that is sufficient.
Fair enough. Any other discussion, debate? Counselor MacIntosh?
I agree with Eric on this one, but just wondering, if we made a decision tonight, hypothetically, we tell the mayor he's got to give up two weeks' pay, would that, we wait, would Eric, your thinking would be the next council meeting would be in the minutes? And that's public?
If I, if I might, Counselor MacIntosh, I'll be looking for a motion with regards to that.
Okay.
After we do this one, which I'll entertain, question, debate, whatever the case may be. So, currently, we have, how do we want it displayed in public? We have a motion to say, "Leave it in the agenda," and that's sufficient. Anybody else who wishes to discuss the motion with regards to how we display it to the public? Hearing none. All in favor of leaving it in the agenda? Opposed? All right, looks like we're good. The last thing we need to do as a council is to determine whether we are going to kind of move forward with Mr. Fleming's recommendations, or whether we're going to do nothing. Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. Well, I believe and I recommend to my peers that we, in fact, do not follow the recommendation. I think docking two weeks' pay for an error that was inadvertent and that has been apologized for many times, and...
I might all get a seconder on that first, and then I'll let you say what you feel you need to say. Do I have a seconder to not dock the mayor for two weeks? I have Counselor Gardener as a seconder. Counselor McDonald, it's all yours.
And as Mr. Fleming notes in his report, there was no deliberate attempt to send campaign messages, and there was just no malice attached to this. And I recognize this occurred in the mayor's office, but I've been a councillor now for four terms. I do not believe I've ever seen a mayor spend as much time in the office as councillor, former councillor Grant, Mayor Grant, has. He's there every day and almost all day. So, I think that we've dealt with other breaches of the code of conduct, and we have not chosen to penalize the perpetrator, because we felt that whatever lessons could be learned, were learned, and the fact is, we're simply concerned to encourage good behavior and not to penalize a momentary lapse such as this one. And so, I recommend that we end the matter with the publication of the incident and the mayor's... the incident and the mayor's apology, which has been said many times.
Okay. Are we okay? Do we have a working motion? Okay. So anybody with regards to that? Councillor Gardner and then councillor Bergeron.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. I know when I took the mayor's position, Grant had very little experience when he took over as mayor and hit the road in running. And I do agree with councillor McDonald that every time I went in there, he just seemed to be in there and worked his butt off. I, for one, Mr. Fleming, if you can answer this question, there are two recommendations. One, that there was a public apology, number one, and number two, that his pay be docked for two weeks. I will answer the first one by saying that he has already apologized for his mistake, and it's an honest mistake, and there was no malice in it. There isn't a person in this room that hasn't made mistakes before, and he's one that made a mistake that cost him dearly publicly. As far as the two weeks' pay, no, I will not entertain voting in favor of that. The workload in the mayor's job is taken seriously by the mayor, who puts hours upon hours in. And I know when I was acting mayor, there were times when I had to replace him because he didn't have the time. So for me, the mayor is doing a good job, and I don't believe that I need to do anything but slap him in the hand and say, you apologize to the public, you apologize to this council, and you did it publicly. So thank you very much for your work, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, councillor Bergeron?
Thank you. So, I mean, to recap, I will not be voting in favor of this. I would have voted with the recommendation. I think the punishment meets what happened here. And I'm going to reiterate, this is not one inadvertent email. The mayor emailed a press release to members of the public, then did it again because it wasn't attached, so there's two emails. The mayor used a member of city administration while working at the office to create this document and receive the email during working hours at City Hall. I'm glad the mayor is working a lot. I have no problem with that. But the mayor, more than anyone, knows that you cannot use the resources of City Hall for an election campaign. And our integrity commissioner has pointed that out. This is not one inadvertent email. That's very important here. I mean, I think we need to look into the confidentiality breach. That is a separate item, I will admit. That also did occur. And so I will not be supporting this motion. The apology that was sent was about sending an email inadvertently. That is not an apology for what has happened. So if the mayor is willing to apologize for the four breaches of the municipal act, then I would accept that. That is not what happened here. So I will not be supporting this. I think the punishment fits the crime or code of conduct breach, if you will. And so I support what was published. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Fair enough. Any other speakers? Councillor MacIntosh?
Just one clarification. I may have misunderstood Eric on this one. He said something about the email was sent to the mayor during working hours. I sent the mayor the email. I could not swear on the Bible that I sent that during working hours. It may have been in the evening, may have been on a Sunday. I'm not sure, Eric, on that one. But I'm not sure about the working hours. I think that would be debatable. I know it's a small thing, but...
Fair enough. Any other comments? I don't really think I want this to be a back and forth between my two colleagues. I'm not looking to rebuttal.
It's for a fact related in the report. It's your call.
I'd prefer not. Councillor Ebert, go. Question, comment?
Did I raise my hand?
I saw a hand up.
I didn't. I didn't, but I'm happy to speak, if you'd like me to. I'm going to support the motion. I think if the breach intended harm in some way, was malicious in some way, I would vote the other way. I would certainly think then there would be some kind of pay reduction or any kind of change within honorariums would be required. But I think in this case, yes, a breach happened, but in no way, shape, or form was it on purpose. It was a mistake. We all make mistakes. I make them on a daily basis. It's what makes us human. And if anybody wants a document converted to PDF, I'd be happy to do it for them in the future. That is all. Thank you.
Fair enough. Any other comment, debates on the motion on the floor? Councillor Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Chair. I've been reading this conclusion and recommendations over and over and over again, trying to figure out how I wanted to vote on this. And so I thought I was going to listen to the comments around the table to help me make up my mind. And I think, I think the conversation has helped me in that regard, and it's actually steering me to where I was leaning in the first place. As councillor Ebert said, this wasn't malicious. It absolutely shouldn't have happened. It wasn't malicious. It's something I think we all need to be aware of around this table, that we're using our emails correctly. But that's a pretty stiff fine. So while I can appreciate the recommendations, and I understand that, you know, we want to make sure that the public, the confidence is there in the public within their elected officials. And I would think this conversation alone should reassure the public that these things are being taken care of. So, you know, an incident happened. There was a complaint made. It was investigated. All the steps were done to hold people accountable. There was an apology made. And to go any further than publishing it just seems a little bit extreme to me. So I will vote in favor of this motion.
Thank you, councillor Bennett. Any other comments on the motion on the floor? Seeing none. All in favor of the... Oh, wait, if I might, Madam Clerk, can I have the motion read so that everybody's clear what they're voting for?
As I understand it, the motion is not to follow through with the recommendations made by the integrity commissioner.
Fair enough. We all good with that? All right. So all in favor... Oh, councillor MacIntosh, are we asking a question on the motion?
Yes. One of the recommendations from the integrity commissioner was an apology.
There was, yes.
Okay. I guess the fact that the apology has been given, okay, but... Okay.
All right. All in favor of the motion? All opposed? I believe our motion is carried, Madam Clerk. All right. Thank you very much, council, for your patience. Well, your worship, I guess you're back in charge.
Well, thank you, Dean, for that, and an actual fact the mayor is in charge, the council's in charge. I follow your orders, so...
Madam Clerk?
Consent reports. Proclamation Rail Safety Week with a recommendation that council proclaimed the week of September 19th to 25, 2022, as Rail Safety Week in the city of Cornwall. Request for Noyes bylaw exemption at 914 Tollgate Road. The action recommended is that council approve the request for a Noyes bylaw exemption at 914 Tollgate Road on Saturday, September 10th, from 4:00 p.m. to 12:00 midnight. Temporary street closure for Cornwall Art Walk with a recommendation that council approve the temporary street closure of Pitt Street from Second Street to First Street and from First Street to 58 Pitt Street on Friday, August 19th, between the hours of 4:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. July PAC 37 at Cumberland. The recommendation that council endures the Cornwall Paling Programs Evaluation Group recommendation as presented to the Planning Advisory Committee on July 18, 2022. PAC Report Number Two with a recommendation that council approve the PAC recommendation as presented, which is that the northern portion of 1300 Marlow Avenue have the whole designation removed to rezone the parcel from Employment Area Light 1-H to Employment Area Light. Terms of reference for 22 P16 External Auditing Services with a recommendation that council receive this report. Economic Development Activity Report with a recommendation that council receive this report.
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Councillor Bennett, councillor Ebert, all in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Reports from Unfinished Business. First report is special events licensing exemption request with a recommendation that council receive this report, and B, deny the special event business license exemption request received from the Eastern Ontario Agri-Food Network on behalf of the Eastern Ontario Garlic Market.
Motion? Councillor McDonald?
I move the recommendation.
Seconder? Councillor Gardner? All in favor? Opposed? Carrie, thank you.
Waste disposal site tipping fee restructuring with the following recommendations. The council approved the increase of the landfill tipping fees charged to industrial, commercial, and institutional waste generators from the current levy of $85 per tonne to $125 per tonne effective January 1, 2023. That council approve a surcharge of 50% of the landfill tipping fee rate charged to industrial, commercial, and institutional waste generators from the proposed levy of $125 per tonne to $187.50 per tonne for waste disposed at the city landfill containing recyclable or divertible materials effective January 1, 2025. And C, that council approve a surcharge of 50% of the landfill tipping fee rate charged to residential waste generators from the levy of $85 per tonne to $127.50 per tonne for waste disposed at the city landfill containing recyclable or divertible materials effective January 1, 2023.
Motion? Councillor McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move all A, B, and C, and I do have a couple of questions, but I'll wait for a seconder.
A seconder? Councillor Bennett? Councillor McDonald?
So I do have some questions of the manager of Solid Waste. I believe Mr. Kuhn would respond. I'm wondering what your next steps are in terms of public engagement, and then, once that's done, I'm curious to know exactly how you will determine if somebody's waste actually contains recyclable or divertible materials.
Mr. DeWitt?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to refer this to Mr. Romano. But before we do that, I'd like to just introduce Mr. Romano to all of you. I don't think that many of you have met Mr. Romano. So Stephen, if you can just stand up for a second. So Stephen Romano is our new manager of environmental services, and Stephen is a professional engineer with a degree in biochemical and environmental engineering, and he also has a master's degree in biochemical and environmental engineering. Stephen has eight years of experience with consulting in municipal fields. He comes to us from the city of London, and where he held responsibilities as an environmental engineer. Given his knowledge and experience, we feel very fortunate that Stephen is here with us, with the corporation. And Stephen will oversee operational and capital planning for many environmental department sections, including water treatment, wastewater treatment, waste management, and environmental sustainability. So I'll just turn over this question to Stephen. And just before we go on, I know there's some other people in the room that may not have been introduced to formally. Natasha Posega is here. Natasha, I think we introduced her the last time. She's working as the Water Conservation Coordinator for the city. And maybe you know Dave Kuhn a little bit more because Dave's been around a little bit longer, but Dave is our Waste Management Coordinator. And I just want to make sure that everybody knows who we're speaking to here. So I'll pass it on to Stephen.
Welcome, Stephen.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Firstly, thanks, everyone, for the warm welcome. I want to commend my colleagues and the council members who I've met for being really warm and welcoming and getting me up to speed the last month here. So I can already tell it's a great team here. I'm excited to continue doing some good work. So to address the questions about public communication, and I know from when this report was deferred, it was kind of a big issue on multiple fronts. So first, per the recommendation, we did reach out to all the haulers we deal with in the city who had concerns. We only heard back from one of them, and it is addressed in the report, but we were very open with our communication. And our plan going forward is to continue this transparency. We plan to have this grace period from September to the New Year where we'll do audits and not actually charge the penalty fees, but, you know, help the haulers identify some of these issues. We plan to go out to a lot of these IC&amp;I businesses and other people using these bins, to, you know, provide them with formal documentation of what's expected and be there for them if they have any questions along the way. So we are very confident in our communication plan. Like I said, we want to be open and transparent, but at the same time, we really feel it's important to start saving these funds and getting the revenue for the landfill closure when it happens.
Thank you. And do you anticipate actually stopping trucks at the landfill site as they enter? And... Yeah, you do.
Yeah. So the plan is going to be to inspect them, and we realize it's not a perfect science.
Right.
But, you know, we're still going to do our best and put the initiative forward. And, you know, we should still catch or be able to identify most of the truckloads.
Sounds very good.
Excuse me. Councillor Hollingsworth?
Thank you, your worship. I don't know if it's to you, Bill, or Mr. Romano, whoever wants to tangle with this one, but on page 78 of our agenda, your report points out that front-load trucks collect multiple sources, and therefore, you can't really determine who's putting stuff into that. You don't know who's breaking the rules, correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, there will be some challenges, especially when those multiple front ends are collected together. But that's why our plan is to work with the haulers and the community. It's really going to be a team effort to push this good initiative through. And we're hoping, you know, everyone gets on board. And if people don't want to get on board, it's going to be on the haulers to, you know, kind of build that potential penalty fees into their new contracts. And part of the reason we want to start in the New Year is because they'll be able to renegotiate or reword their contracts accordingly.
Thank you. I'm probably not going to support the motion, your worship. I agree that we need to extend our landfill site. I agree that we need to get people to not throw recyclables in our landfill site. Having beaned the landfill site, the two issues I have, the notion of somebody sitting at the bottom of that landfill site, trying to decide who's put recyclables in there and who hasn't, seems like a rather unscientific way of doing it. I have a problem with that. The second problem I have is that, as is already expressed, even our own administration admits, that with these front- that with these front-load truck collectibles or collection, nobody knows who's breaking the rules. That's like speeding down the highway, and the police officer has a radar but doesn't know which car's officially broken the speed limit, so he's just going to randomly pick somebody that he thinks might be breaking the limit and give them the fine. It seems like, I understand the need to do this, but the way we're doing it, in my humble estimation, does not satisfy the essence of fairness. And spent 20 years in education, I appreciate education, but not everybody gets with the program, and we're kind of hanging our hat on that. It doesn't strike me as a particularly fair way of doing it, and education is important, and it's great, but people are told not to smoke cigarettes, but they still do. So, I'm not convinced education is going to exclusively fix our problem. Therefore, I'm not going to support the recommendations under this particular current version. Thank you.
Counselor Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will support the recommendation. It was a lengthy report, and believe me, I had to go over it a couple of times to find out what the right numbers were. But at the end of the day, in the next few years in this report, this consultant's report will result in a full cost recovery of the residential waste services. It will be achieved. The current waste disposal system cost does not include the full cost of service. And finally, in my decision, at some point in time, we're going to have to spend $37 million to shut that waste disposal place down and another $30 million or so, or $27 million in order to reopen a new one, if that's the case. So, in my opinion, this is a good report. Thank you for it, and it's about time we started getting the costs for our services.
Counselor McIntosh?
Welcome to Cornell, Mr. Romano. My brother-in-law worked with you in the City of London. He was engineering department. He has nothing but good things to say about you. I agree with Counselor Hollingsworth. I'll use the analogy that it's like charging the store owner for litter that's left in front of his building. It's really unfair. The way the one hauler explained to me, he'll show up at a condominium, front end, dumps it, takes it to the dump. He has no idea what's in there, and I think there was a suggestion, maybe the driver could take a look in. Just it's not feasible at all. They're really being punished for somebody else's transgressions. Reading this report, and I didn't read it line by line, it's like drinking from a fire hose, I get the feeling that perhaps if the haulers all went to Moose Creek, it wouldn't be a bad idea. Am I misreading that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the Moose Creek alternative is, I guess, one that is kind of being promoted. We want to, our tipping fees are so low right now that we're actually attracting more business, particularly ICI customers, and it's just filling up our landfill at an expedited rate. So, the intent would be to hopefully divert a lot of this ICI waste to the Moose Creek landfill.
Yeah, I noticed in the report, too, that residential waste has decreased, the other has increased, come from other sources. Wouldn't that put a bigger onus, a financial burden, on the residential taxpayer? If all the industries in that drove the 25 miles north of here, we take in a lot of revenue from these folks, don't we?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we do. It will, and we mentioned in the report, a residential tax levy may have to be looked at, but from a fairness and equity perspective, the ICI sector has been subsidizing the residential sector for some time now. So, like I said, from a fairness perspective, and in order to meet our closing fees we need for the landfill, we will need the residents to start pitching in a bit more. That being said, we have found, since we've imposed things like the two-bag limit and other incentives, the residential sector have done a great job of recycling more, and their waste tonnage has gone down significantly, which is a promising sign. We struggle more with the ICI sector, who don't seem as willing to want to separate the recycling from the actual waste, and they'd rather just pay to take it.
Yeah, I'm not getting into that, but the hauler isn't the source of the garbage. He picks it up. So, if there's a problem, it's with the people who live in buildings that use these bins. It's not the guy who picks up the garbage and takes it to the dump. His problem is, how does he convince those people to, or the city does, to recycle, to keep that? That's the challenge, isn't it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, it certainly is a challenge, but I mean, we're in a bit of a tough spot because if, you know, we continue as the norm is, we're just creating a larger and larger funding gap that we need for our landfill closure. So, it's just due diligence and engineering. We need to start making up some of these fees, so unfortunately, we will have to put some of the onus more on the haulers and the people throwing out their garbage. And the hope would probably be, if they're getting all these penalties, they'll come together as a community or promote more recycling and to keep their streams separate.
I'm not very optimistic that the people living in condominiums or other places are going to be really that concerned about the hauler's problems with being at the dump where he gets dinged. And again, go back to something Counselor Hollingsworth talked about. How do we, I'm still not clear how we're going to monitor this at the landfill site. Right now, and I've been back there a few times with my trailer, you go through and the gentleman at the gate takes your address and that and asks you what you've got, and then directs you, and there's somebody there watching the two or three big bins. Wouldn't that, what you're suggesting here, monitoring more, involve hiring more people?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It actually wouldn't. Our contractors are down there working off the tipping face, you know, all during the operational hours, and they are willing and have time to check the loads as they're dumped down. So, we already have staff contracted to be down there and are confident they'll be able to look at the loads as they come down.
Okay, that's fine. I agree with the extension. I think that's great. The previous council meeting, we talked about implementing it ASAP, but however, I have a real problem with the monitoring, how we're going to enforce this, and the hauler being, asking the hauler to be policeless, and I'm not going to vote for this, okay? That's what I'm saying.
Any other questions? Counselor Towne?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. More of a couple of comments. I am, like Counselor McIntosh, happy to see the extension. I spoke to the same hauler previously, and I think that was the crux, maybe not the crux, but it was a large part of the concern, that the September timeline initially proposed was very tight. I mean, that would have been about a month from today, realistically. I think the education portion is a good one. I think taking the fall, part of winter, to figure out a way to mitigate throwing in recyclable materials into the waste stream that these haulers pick up is going to be good. It should be helpful, and I think that's what they were looking for. The other two companies didn't, they didn't provide any feedback, and that was a little disappointing, quite frankly, but I mean, it sounds like they're not really concerned about it. That's what I would take from that. There are parts that, it is a very good report. I think it's very detailed. There's a lot of information here that is helpful. I am concerned about shifting more of the burden to the residential tax base. I understand the point about equity and fairness. However, I mean, we already do allocate part of the residential taxes for waste collection, and to add more to that just seems really punitive. I do have concerns with the potential of eliminating ICNI waste or manufacturing and trade waste from our landfill. I understand that life is a question mark, but in order to do that, then we basically shift the entire burden to the residential tax base, and I think that could have some negative effects. I know that's going to be up for discussion later on, potentially, once we get that report presented to us, so I do some comments on that, but I'm going to save that for that time. Overall, though, I think, you know, I find myself in agreement with this overall. I think the extended timeline will help, so I'm going to vote in favor of this tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. We can't be the only municipality dealing with recyclables ending up in the regular garbage, so would it be safe to assume that other municipalities are using a similar system as we are as far as penalizing loads that are going into the dump that have more than 10% recyclable content?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm actually going to pass this one to Mr. Kuhn, who's done more background research on that.
Thank you, Mr. Romano. Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, we did a little bit of the background into what other cities of our size are doing, and we have found that the majority of the ones that we surveyed are employing some sort of surcharge as a penalty to those that bring, you know, a certain threshold of recycling in with their regular waste. Now, our surcharge, being a 50% surcharge, is half of what we've seen from other cities, such as, I believe, Kingston, Peterborough, other cities of our typical size and demographic. They're actually charging a 100% surcharge. So, if your tipping fee is just an easy number, $150 per ton for sorted waste, they're charging $300 for unsorted. So, we feel as though the 50% surcharge is a fair implementation level and a target to roll this out with.
Thank you. Sounds like, thank you for this report, by the way. It's very good, and I agree with your recommendations, but it does sound like, once again, we're playing catch-up to what the rest of the province seems to be doing with just about anything we seem to be dealing with lately, and that we're being very reasonable and that we're only going to charge 50% instead of 100%, as stated, the other municipalities are doing. We have to start somewhere. This problem isn't going away. The comment, though, that the ratepayers are subsidizing the ICNI sector, and maybe that's unfair, but we have to remember, if we look at our water, the ratepayers are subsidizing commercial use, so it's going to balance out in the end. Overall, I think, like I just said, we've got to start somewhere, and I think this is as good a place as any, and this is a good report, and the fact that you extended it to January 1, I think, addressed the concerns I had originally, so I'm more than happy to support these recommendations.
Any other comments? Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, there's that old saying that the perfect is the enemy of the good, and I think this is a perfect example of that, of where if we wait until we have a perfect system, we're never going to start. And Mr. Romano has said, this isn't a perfect system, but I think we all recognize that it's a good beginning. And I think that a really important piece here is the education. There'll be discussions going on with the haulers, as Mr. Romano said, and I think that'll be very productive. Any of the great social changes that we have enacted on council haven't resulted from penalties imposed. It's been from education. We bring people around, and I'm confident that people will come around. And I think that if you get cases where some hauler picks up material that is claiming to be unrecyclable and is recyclable, well, he'll pretty soon learn who those people are, and they will simply pay more. Like, I don't think the hauler is going to be disadvantaged because they're a business, and they'll recognize that risk, and I'm sure they'll compensate for it. So, I think that this is a great beginning, and when we come up with maybe something else to improve it further, I'm sure that the department will bring it to us, and I hope we'll adopt it, and I certainly hope we adopt this measure now.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Carrie, thank you.
We are now looking for a motion to receive the unfinished business listing for August 8th, Mr. Mayor.
Motion? Counselor Ebert, Counselor Carr, all in favor? Oh, Counselor Hollingsworth?
Quick question, Your Worship. With regards to the unfinished business, there was a motion supported by council. I can't find the unfinished business offhand, but it was to have admin draft a letter with regards to the 138, asking for the senior levels of government to make that highway safer, and I don't know if it was sent through email, and I missed it, but there was a motion on new business, have admin draft a letter that we could peruse, discuss, and have sent to both the senior levels of government and to neighboring municipalities for support. And I don't have the listing in front of me. Can't find it. But I looked at it last night, and I don't see that in the unfinished business listing. Have I missed it somehow, or what's happening with that?
And MCO?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, it didn't make the unfinished business listing, but I don't think that it was coming back to council. Like, typically, the unfinished business listings are the reports that we're bringing back to a council meeting. I can also let you know that we do have a meeting planned with our members of parliament and neighbors about the 138. So, we'll be coordinating. I don't believe, I'm looking at the merit, don't believe the letter has been formally sent out as of yet, but what we'll do is, we will provide an update, and we'll either, I think what we'll do is, we'll provide an update to council, and we'll email it to council. We can bring it back to the September, the first meeting in September as an update as to what actions were taken. So, we'll bring that back. We'll bring that back at the next meeting.
That's fine. Is there any chance for future meeting that we can leave it at least as unfinished? It doesn't necessarily have to come to council.
What we'll do is, we'll put it on the unfinished business listing.
Yes.
And then, on the next meeting, it will show that it was resolved at the, or the actions that were taken at that.
Right, whether it be some kind of report or something, just so we know.
So, we'll put it on the list, and at the next meeting, it'll also show the actions that we have a report that will show the actions that were taken.
That's fair enough. Thank you, Madam CIO. Thank you, Your Worship.
You're welcome. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
That meeting is being generated by, or coordinated through Eric Duncan and Nolan Quinn and the county, so it's going to be a meeting to talk specifics about 138. So, we should have a good report back at that time.
All in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you.
Pitt Street Development Update. The action recommended is that council approve proceeding with development scenario three as outlined in this report with a cost of up to $13 million.
Motion? Counselor Towne, Counselor McDonald, Counselor Ebert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question, which could potentially result in an amendment to the current proposed motion. I may be rocking the boat here, but I'd like to ask a question to Ms. Morgan. So, I'm really happy to see this. It's obviously coming at the right time. We all know we're in a housing crisis, and so I'm looking at the different scenarios, and the difference between scenario two and scenario three, which three is being proposed, is 2.3, give or take, million dollars, which seems like a lot of money, but in a housing crisis, 2.3 million dollars to add an extra nine units, potentially housing 27, if not more, residents, that's assuming there's about three people per unit. You know, would we not want to maybe look at a little increase now to add more units right away, especially since the per-unit cost is actually reduced by $5,300 if we go with scenario two versus scenario three? So, technically saving money in the long run if we do eventually go with the full scale of this project? Wondering why administrations are recommending three instead of scenario two?
Melissa?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We just recommended development scenario three and the three buildings, just based on the physical location of the other buildings and future construction. We wanted to avoid, excuse me, as little disruption to the tenants during future construction phases as possible. phases as possible. That's really all that was the reason for going with development phase three.
So future disruption to the tenants that would then be residing, or the ones, or the residents in the neighborhood?
The residents that would be residing in whatever we build now, in future construction phases down the road, trying to avoid, because the way you see the buildings laid out, if we added a fourth building, there would be construction beside and in front of it potentially, so it was just based on how many units we'd be able to add, or how many buildings we'd be able to add in future phases. If we did two more buildings at a time, we would do them in three more phases.
So do we, would we have potential timelines in place for the next phase of this? Is this like a 10, 15 years down the road, or is this a five years? Is it, you know, we wrap up scenario three and right away jump into the next phase? Or is it pie in the sky?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it would depend on a number of factors, based on our housing revitalization plan. We also have to look at other developments, not only in the city, but in the counties as well, develop, or debt, taking on that much debt, and the amount of funding we might receive from other levels of government to help build these future phases.
Would there be a benefit to your clients and our community if we bit the bullet and went with scenario two right away?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I think adding as many units as possible, as soon as possible, is going to help the residents.
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion to propose that we go with scenario two if the mover and the second are happy to entertain such amendment.
I think that's a completely separate motion rather than amendment, because the motion is to go with scenario three.
Okay, so then, oh, I don't want to vote against it if I can't. So I will see how I will vote after my colleagues have had a chance to speak, and if it is defeated, I'll be happy to propose a new motion. But if I see it's going to pass, I'm not going to vote in favor for this, this is great regardless, so I will be cautious with how I decide to vote. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Towndale.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, Counsel Ebert asked my question, I was asking regarding timelines, because this is, this is great progress, this is, you know, I think this establishes a really great plan moving forward, but, you know, my concern is, or was without appropriate timelines, this is, you know, we build the first phase, then what happens after that? But I understand there's a lot of, it's like juggling a lot of balls in the air to get an answer in terms of when we can move forward with the next phases, I understand that might not be possible right now, but that was my question, thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, if I may, so one of the next phases of our department is to create a 10-year development plan, and the future phases of this project would be included in that 10-year development plan, including a financial cost to build those units over 10 years, and that would include not only the city, but the units identified that are needed in the counties as well. So it would form part of a 10-year development plan that we're drafting.
Thank you, Melissa. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion? Opposed? Carrie, thank you.
We are going to go back to our consent items that we moved for discussion, and the first one is the RFP 22P12, Universal Water Metering, AMI Consulting and Project Management, with a recommendation that this RFP be awarded to a diameter Services Incorporated from Peckering at a total bid price of $1,692,615.70.
Counsel Hollingsworth. Counsel Towndale? Any questions? Counsel McIntosh, Counsel Gardner?
Just somebody can bring me up to speed on some of the things that's going to happen, this consult's going to be doing, direct us to Mr. Duett, or Madam Cao?
Sure.
Okay. Some of the, okay, the consultant is from Peckering, he's going to work with how to install water meters for a very mundane term. Project management services to design, procure, and install a universal water metering system throughout the city. Just, does he work with our person we have that's in charge of this? I'm just wondering what kind of guidance he provides that...
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to...
I guess what I'm asking, what do we get for our 1.5 million?
Yeah, I'm going to refer this to Mr. Romano again.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this, the consultant provides a lot of value, and with any, you know, complex engineering project like this, it's typical to hire the consultant. So they'll be offering services right from the start, you know, background review, going over the different technologies out there, they're the true experts in this field, and although Ms. Posaga, our water conservation lead, does bring a lot to the table, the scale of this project would be way too big to take on in-house. So we also feel that, like, again, any other engineering design project that then goes to build, you get a lot of efficiencies by doing things right off the bat with the consultant, and it's almost the, you know, measure twice, cut once approach, and they've done, diameter has a lot of experience, they've done a lot of projects like this, and we're confident that by hiring them, we're going to save money and have efficiencies, and keep scope creep from happening when the construction phase of the project comes. It's not as simple as popping water meters in, especially since a lot of it's going to be retrofits. There's a lot of smart communication out there and other parameters that need to be looked at carefully in order for the implementation to go smoothly.
Okay, I, okay, it seems to be a fair amount of money to be spending on that, but you've explained that this is needed, that we don't have the expertise to really do it ourselves.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, like I said, the scale of the project itself is just far too big, we feel like their cost is competitive, and the value is there, so basically, $1.5 million worth of work for Natasha alone, it would take her way too long, if you think about it. They have the experts, they have the staff, and certainly, we plan to work closely with them through all facets of the project, but they are the technical experts.
How long does this contract last? Is it a one-year, two-year?
So they're sticking with us, oh, sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor, the consultant's sticking with us right till the end of the project, and doing QA QC on the successful contractor who will be installing them, to ensure everything is per the specifications and design drawings that we come up with, so they'll be right with us right till closeout, which I believe is 2025, we hope to have them all installed.
Okay.
Counsel Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've budgeted $1.3 million for this report, and it comes out $250,000 short. It's, the cost is $1,524,252, and it's short $252,000. So where's that money coming from? Is it going to be a loan, or is it coming from reserves?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, and we can redirect that to Mrs. Bailey, but per the project, the project will be financed, so I believe that per the comments and the financial implications, we would borrow that additional $225,000 to fund the difference between the bid price and what was planned.
So it's a loan?
Correct.
Okay. Number two is just a comment. I'm not going to vote in favor of this, because from day one, I've been against meters, and it's my opinion that, shared with many households in this city, is not needed at this time, and approximately $20 million to be borrowed for this project should not be a burden to our taxpayers. So that's all I have to say, and I'll vote against this. Thank you.
Counsel Hollingsworth?
Thank you, Worship, just on this particular item, if we were going to build a hockey rink, we'd hire architects, even though we might have some staff who could give you some pretty specific ideas about how to build a hockey rink, we would still go out and hire an architect to do that. When we retrofitted the post office for a library, we hired an architect. The point is, this is the cost of these types of projects, and we're talking about potentially 20,000 homes. I don't imagine our current staff can just find the amount of time in their daily schedule to retrofit a 20,000-home municipality. I mean, they have other duties, too, so I just, I mean, nobody likes to spend money for nothing, but I can't see us kind of half-baking this, so, and as far as the additional cost, we have a number of other projects on the go right now that I can assure council will most likely be over budget. We have an arts facility we're talking about, we have a fire station, I would be very surprised if they come in perfectly on budget, so that's really just the nature of things, so I'll support the motion. Thank you.
Any other comments? All in favor of the motion? Opposed? Carrie, thank you.
Providing for the conveyance of land for park purposes or cash in lieu of parkland conveyance, with the action recommended is that council approve the new parkland dedication bylaw, which will be on the agenda, and that bylaw 062-1989 be repealed and replaced with the new parkland dedication bylaw.
Motion? Counsel McDonald?
So...
Need a seconder?
Sorry?
Counsel Ebert?
I'll move the recommendation, but I have a couple of questions, so should I wait for a seconder and then ask?
We got a second.
Okay, good. So it seems to me from reading this that within the COVID-19 Economic Recovery Act, we can actually have developers dedicate less land for parkland, like, for example, instead of a hectare for 300 units, we accept a hectare of land for 500 units. So it seems to me in a way that we're getting less, I guess you'll probably agree to that, but is the idea that the benefit of taking cash in lieu instead of the land, that we're going to be able to better maintain our existing parks, and down the road sometime, we'll worry about building more? It seems to me the emphasis is on serving well the parks we have, rather than acquiring land for parks.
Mr. Boilow?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. I would agree with you, it seems to be less generous for, as a result of what they've put in place regarding the Economic Recovery Act. I think the good news really for the municipality, though, is that it's a pretty uncommon occurrence that we would use that calculation. We would typically use the, most of our development occurs in plans of subdivision, and so this tends to be more with respect to high-density development, which we don't tend to see very much of, and so it's a very uncommon situation for us, but I would agree, it seems to be less generous for us in those situations.
Right, okay, and something else I noted was, and I wasn't aware of this before, that there are reductions for affordable housing and nonprofit development, so I'm assuming then that the two new builds the city is working on, with Ms. Morgan's leadership, that there's no parkland dedication attached to those developments, am I correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay, so on that note, I want to commend the city, because I did check a couple of playgrounds and some housing units this summer, I was worried about the kind of fencing we put up around all our playgrounds, and some of them really abut against some housing developments, but I checked, and it seems to me there's easy access from some of our housing developments and the parks adjoining them, so I think the city's been careful to ensure that everybody has access to playground, even though the developers, the builders, it's probably the city anyway, who's building the nonprofit homes, don't have to provide parkland. So just to clarify all that.
All in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we're looking for a motion to adopt bylaws 2022-89 to 2022-095.
That, one bylaw was...
Yeah, bylaw 88 was moved for discussion.
Okay, going to do that first, or?
It's up to you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, we'll do that first.
Okay. So bylaw 88, you want to discuss?
Yeah.
So bylaw 088 is the point, Leighton Woods as community emergency management program coordinator, Matthew Stevenson and Melissa Morgan as alternates, and to repeal the previous bylaws.
Counsel McIntosh?
Yeah, just, I imagine, I assume we're talking about a natural disaster that Mr. Woods would be, take over the operation of...
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it doesn't have to necessarily be a natural disaster, it could be an emergency situation in the community, it could be driven by weather, but it could be driven by something that has an impact on the city not being able to properly respond and deliver services, and so it would cover a myriad of many things.
Yeah, heaven forbid, but a school shooting. Would Mr. Woods...
So typically, depending on what the emergency is, something like that might trigger a response from the police services department, but then if there was a greater need to respond, then Mr. Woods and Melissa Morgan would be, and Matt Stevenson would be, the individuals that would step up and work with the city, as well as if we had to engage outside organizations, if we had to engage our surrounding municipalities, they would provide assistance through that. So in that particular situation, there might be a little bit of a lead through Cornwall Police or Regional Police, OPP, who knows? But yes, so to your, to your answer, depending on what the emergency is, we would be engaged. So we did have, years ago, there was an emergency that actually occurred along the 401 in, I want to say, South Glengarry, and that actually brought in our city emergency management crews to help with South Glengarry respond to that, it was a bus accident, I believe, Melissa, so, so depending on what it is, we all respond.
I'm just wondering if there was a situation where the police would have to report to our person? The previous police chief had expressed some concern about that, when it was first brought up, that would he be reporting to whoever our program coordinator was?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to say, I'm going to say no, right? I think that what is very important is, depending on what the emergency is, we really pull together as a team to be able to respond in the best way possible.
Yeah, actually, this is a throwback to the Cold War days, when we had an emergency measures coordinator, and he did something very similar, in case the Russians decided to do this, to tell us how to survive it. Anyway, okay, you've answered my question.
Counsel Gardner?
Yeah, one of the reasons that these people are put in place, Mr. Woods especially, I spoke to him not too long ago, and being on the emergency management committee, wanted information, he was not able to give me information about what needs to be done, because the province has made so many changes in their policies, that Mr. Leighton had to, with, along with someone else, find out what their policy was, were, and write them in our emergency management book, so... management book, so I hope that's coming. He was to maybe, once it's ready, to speak about it and let the public know and let us know exactly what's going on, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Perhaps if I could, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Woods and Mr. Stevenson and Ms. Morgan are coming back in September. There'll be a presentation to council to provide, I think, a bit of an update and an overview, overview with respect to our emergency management program, so that's coming in September.
So, Madam Clerk, having dealt with that, we can include that in all the bylaws? It was just for clarification.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, great idea. So bylaws then 2021-88 to 95 are being presented for adoption.
Motion? Counselor Hollingsworth, Counselor Ebert, all in favor? Carrie, thank you.
So we are looking for reports from standing advisory special and Haddock committees.
Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to address the card that I gave all the counselors and some of the administration before the meeting. I want to speak to that and I'm sorry, I, I don't have one for everybody in the room, but I believe you'll see the image that's on the card in person in this chamber before too long. We're working on it anyway. This is an image, it's entitled "Wave of Humanity" and it was, it's a huge quilt, approximately 10 by 10, and it was made by our own Association des Canadiens Français d'Ontario. I hope I said that right, I should have asked you to help me, Counselor Towndale, but it was made with the help of the, the people there at ACFO and the Traveling College on Aquasasne and there was a grand unveiling of it this Sunday and the quilt just basically contains the history, starting from the 1600s, the wave of humanity, of course, where the European settlers whose presence very soon became more of a tsunami than a wave and in pictorial form, the history of the next few hundred years is depicted. And I, I'm really happy to say that with the Truth and Reconciliation Report and people's embrace of it and the baby steps we're all taking to conform to the calls of action, that the quilt depicts optimism, that they see a time when we will have a much greater opportunity to live equitably, peacefully coexisting and sharing resources more equitably than we do now. So this will be on display at the Traveling College and I encourage anybody who is traveling to the island to take a look at it and of course, to go to the Traveling College, one doesn't need a passport, but there's so much to see there, including this quilt. And another sad note on, from the arts community, Esther Bryan, who brought so much fame to our area with the Quilt of Belonging, which is a national treasure, died last week, so she certainly left a wonderful legacy. Thank you.
Counselor McIntosh and Counselor Gardner?
You know, we sing the Ukrainian National Anthem at the start of the meetings and the war seems so far away and my thoughts are with the Ontario Hockey Academy. One of their students was a soldier with the Ukrainian Army, was killed in a rocket attack last Thursday. He played hockey here, he attended school here and I wish I'd written down his name, I can't pronounce it, but anyway, their mourning today, the great loss, he understands, he was an excellent student, an excellent person to be around and he had just gotten married, he was 26 years old and sad news, but...
Counselor Gardner? I'm going to refer this to Counselor McDonald, but we have an art walk coming up and I'd like you to let them know what the date was. I wrote them down and left a paper at home, so I don't know the date, so would you go ahead and, and speak about art walk, the art walk?
Okay, well, the date of art walk has moved to August 19th and I believe we approved traffic shutdown for the four hours duration, so it was well attended in July and we're looking forward to good attendance in August too.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We have no notices of motion, so we are presenting the confirming bylaw for approval.
Counselor Bennett, Counselor Gardner, all in favor? Opposed?
Before we adjourn, man, I just, I want to take this opportunity to thank council for their kind words and comments tonight and their support. Rest assured that things happen in, in your life that you don't recognize right away, but I do recognize that it was a faux pas on my part sending that out, but I send out so many emails in a day that sometimes you forget what is election not, so I'm not making excuses, I'm just saying I apologize and thank you for your support, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. Counselor Ebert, Counselor Bennett, all in favor? Thank you.[1758.48]